To have a voice and express themselves and connect them with other opportunities for service is really, really important to the work. As well as data analysis, how do we continue to look at not just how our overarching student population performs, but look at how our AIG population is performing in specific target areas? And breaking out those subgroups between who's academically gifted, if they're academically gifted in one subject area and not another, how are we looking at that growth data specifically to see how our trends are working in our school system? And know the impact that our service, as well as our instruction is providing our families. We have strong and encouraging predictions with this work. We really do believe that personalizing assessments will yield AIG identifications that more closely reflect our district population. As we talked about, we are piloting the use of the NAGLIERI this year. But I want you to know that we're continuing to explore other types of assessments, as well as the opportunities to strengthen that portfolio assessment specific to addressing that goal. We want to continue to strengthen our program services through collaboration with the entire community and all of its stakeholders. It's very, very important to ensure they all have a voice. And we really believe as a learning organization that really being intentional and targeted with professional learning around this specific subgroup is absolutely necessary in order to meet their individual needs. We really appreciate your time and we'd love to have the opportunity, if you have any questions, we would love to have an opportunity to answer them. Thank you.
Slide four, the distribution. What's the universe of students here? Is this third grade, elementary, K-12?
With the demographic slide, sir?
Yeah.
Total student population.
This is K-12?
Total student population.
K-12?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is not the grade 12, it's K-12.
K-12. We do have some early identified.
Okay. K-12.
So, well, we're not identifying K-1, 2. Or are we?
Oh, we do have some early identified students. We do universal screening starting at grade three, but we do have opportunities for early identification.
Okay.
Do we maintain the identification through high school?
Yes.
Okay.
Once identified, they stay identified.
Well, we don't have AIG classes so much once we get to electives.
No.
In high school.
The self-selection of student courses.
So, I'm trying to think through this. Do we have a school where the performance of the subgroups reaches the 80 percent threshold?
So, you're asking, do we have any schools that don't have a gap? Or that whose AIG population reflect the diversity of the district within that 80 percent range?
Do we have two or three or four model schools that have a diverse population? That have reached this 80 percent threshold of participation?
I would, I can't think of any that I am aware of, but I'm not real familiar on school level data. I think we'll have to pull it and take a look at it.
I would find it interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And instruct it.
Who's close, who's far.
And then the other question, and I'll be quiet, is do we know or do we anticipate that the problem solving approach to instruction will identify students earlier in a different way? Kids express themselves through their problem solving strategies as opposed to any kind of formal assessment. What do we anticipate or what have we seen? I'm thinking about the coding videos, the coding video and the tectonic plate movement videos that we've seen that are talking about the implementation of four Cs. But is that kind of instruction, even at kindergarten, likely to reveal more of these latent abilities that the traditional things are not identifying?
I would say that's our expectation, that as instruction changes and as we start moving towards what those changes in the classroom look like that are envisioned in the strategic plan, that that's exactly what will happen. But I think the assessment world moves much slower even than the classroom world. So while we have one option.
I'm not worried about that world. I just want to make sure that we identify the talent and the servant of kids.
Well, I think that raising the bar for all children in terms of the skills that we're asking them to exhibit. And so that has to change what's happening in the classroom. To what extent it impacts identification depends.
I do have one other question, and that is that what we're looking at is an increased effort at identifying and serving children who show particular talent with a budget that is fixed upon at 20 percent of what's necessary to do that. We get 4 percent, we get funding from the state to provide some differential funding for 4 percent of our students. And our AIG population currently identified is approaching 18, 19 percent?
Well, we thought so, and then we looked at it again and due to some of the changes in identification, it's actually 15.6.
15.6 percent. So, we're getting funding to serve a quarter of the students that currently identified. The state says we must serve with these differentiated services. So that's a resource issue that we need to recognize and deal with.
I think that squarely impacts the slide regarding standard two for differentiated curriculum and instruction. When we talk about how we are providing services to students, which would look very different if we had funding that represented 15.6 percent of the students.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was just curious, going back to looking at standard two, and it looks like we start identifying those students in grade three that are gifted and helping the teachers differentiate with the academic coaching. Is there anything, any of that coaching from the AIG teachers that can go down to the K-1, 2? So they can help differentiate for those kids that one may believe are gifted, but maybe not identified yet by test.
Shannon, do you want to explain what we do at AIG?
Hi, I'm Shannon. Yes, there is. Actually, the AIG teachers also serve as resource teachers for the K-1, 2. So they're constantly going to them with different resources to give them. And the teachers are coming to them and asking, what can I do for this child in my class? And so there's a lot of collaboration going on.
So, when you look at your last slide predictions, these remind me an awful lot of the predictions of the last AIG. And as you noted, and as slide four shows, we really didn't move the needle in terms of how well we reflect the district. I didn't hear clearly what we're doing different. Continue doing what you've been doing. We've increased our attempt at identification. What are we doing that we think is going to have a different impact this time?
So, the partnership with Duke is since the last plan was written. So that is, and that is the plan that includes the K-2 nurturing program in select schools. I think there was, the K-2 nurturing program was, is certain schools that are part of the pilot, but there was another set of materials that was provided, K-2 for all schools, even the ones that were not part of nurturing, I can't remember what those are called.
U-Stars.
U-Stars.
They do programs that are going on for three years.
No, no. This is the third year of the, we are in the third year of the Duke and the other, the intentional resources being provided, K-2. And because we've not been collecting feedback along the way around what those changes are even really thought about, to my knowledge, until you just asked what that might look like, we've got to go back and do that work to see if there's been impact with it before we even get to what may ever happen with the results of the assessments in third grade.
So, but shouldn't, if some of the K-2 are included in the numbers on graph four, right? Then.
Very few. There's very few that are identified prior to third grade, very few. I think the standards around what co-teaching looks like and that collaboration are also in about their second year, I think this is the second year of implementation of that. So there are a number of initiatives that are embedded in here that we talked about perhaps in the prior plan that we've actually developed that are, have just started sort of in-between plans. And the jury still up?
Will we get an update on those numbers sooner than the next three years? Because what I'm hearing is we should start seeing that in the next year or two.
Right.
And we shouldn't need to wait till 2019, 2020.
Well, I think just as part of what the DNR, DNRNA's work, you'll get an update on what's happening with the JAS grants as it comes along. And I think that all plans have progress monitoring built in for staff. And to the extent that we can do that annually for the board as well, certainly.
One, glad to see the move towards the more personalized learning piece and competency-based piece. My assumption, it doesn't, I guess specifically say it in terms of the PD for teachers, but my assumption is much of that would be around enhancing teachers' ability to recognize the personalized different needs of students and then creating lesson plans or what have you, differential instruction that meets students at that.
It's really the language that we have in our strategic plan around how we meet the needs of all children. It's in terms that you've heard us talk about around order agency and the four Cs and adaptive resources. And all of that language is really about how you're responding, how teachers and curriculum and central services staff are responsive to students.
Second question, it was along the same lines that Mr. Fletch was asking about, is there a way that we could get some of the school level data to see where the needs or gaps are so that we can then be more strategic in deploying the limited resources we have, if it's at different schools or if we see pockets in different parts of the county or what have you? Because I'm sure schools would be sort of different across the board. And then my third point around that same piece, is there any connection, are we seeing any connection between students that are in AIG and how they move, I guess, through elementary middle into high school? And then they're also enrolling in replacement courses? Because we sort of see the same disparity of disproportionate numbers in our AP courses. I think several years ago, we got some data particularly around looking at where our black males were. And that was less than like 6 percent, less than 200 black males that were taking AP courses in the district. This was maybe four or five years ago, but it was a very low number. And so assuming that there's probably some drop off in that. And then two, that might inform in terms of what kinds of supports we provide to students, particularly through those middle grades, so that we don't see that sort of drop off. If it revolves, it's not so cool to be smart or gifted or.
So I think you'd find the same sorts of gaps that exist in participation, AP level coursework or IB coursework, maybe even honors level coursework. And I think those disparities get, honors to AP is greater and that sort of thing. But we have done some work in the district that we provided some information to the board a while back, but we can bring you an update around, it's an AP rigor, access to rigor committee and work that's been going on that we can bring you and what that looks like. Because we've identified all of the, we actually identified four schools, all of the students that have any data that reflects that they either have an interest or an ability so that we can cross-reference that with students that are actually signing up so that we can actually have those conversations and reach out to students to understand why they may not choose an AP course and how we can provide support that allows students to feel comfortable doing that. That's one step of the work, that's one piece of it. But another piece of it, and that I don't think we've looked at, is specifically what happens with AIG as it moves forward into AP. That may be something we could take a look at.
We've provided all APIs, deans and principals last year in preparation for master scheduling this year. All students that met grade characteristics, EOG scores of placement into those highly rigorous courses so they can identify those gaps by subgroups to drive conversations with teachers. I would love to provide an update to the board on that work. Because I do think it ties in naturally to the conversation here this morning, or this afternoon.
You're asking, do I think it does?
No, I'm saying I would love, I think it would, to your request, I think we have a lot of really exciting things to share in that space with the board.
I was going to go back to clustering, are we using clustering as an example of strategy? As a strategy to boost participation among students who haven't been in AIG or AP courses so that they lessen that isolation as they go forward in these courses? Is that a strategy being used?
So I don't know that clustering might be an opportunity. For, if you want to talk about specifically what clustering works like.
I was just going to say that clustering is just like a best practice because the students that are identified at AIG need the other students in there with them. sometimes we've gone into schools where there's only one AIG student in a room and they just don't have that person to play off of, so that's why with four of them in there.
At the rate of gain for students who are clustered is greater than those that are students that are not clustered.
Well, I could tell you from the classroom, it has a huge impact on everybody else. If you've got, if you've got a cluster who is draining and couldn't care less, that sucks the energy out of a class. If you've got a cluster who actually is eager and that just brings it up for the whole class, I mean, it really has a much bigger impact than on the cluster itself.
And making sure that the clustering is not going into, moving into homogenous grouping, letting know does not help student achievement, and that's the balance.
Thank you for saying that. That was my next point, neither.
I knew, I figured we were doing that, just calling out, but it's, it's there noticeable.
I've got a question in terms of being proactive for our K one, two kids who haven't been identified, but to Dr. Martin's point, and I think you also alluded to this, that teachers in the class can tell this kid may be someone we want to watch. So I guess I'm curious if we are, especially in terms of equity, are we looking at how to engage not just the kid through the teacher tapping the AIG teacher in their school for resources, but are we also engaging the family and the parents early, because I see this as a later strategy? But for me, that, from an equity standpoint, that would be a strategy that can be extremely beneficial to a family moving forward.
Is that all?
So actually, that is what we're moving towards, that's, that's why we're so excited about the new plan, because we're finally getting into the schools with the underrepresented schools and the populations in there, and we're going to be involving the families and more of the teachers and what do they look for and, you know, how do they know if that kid, just because they haven't had different experiences does not mean that that child is not gifted. So that's what, that's why we're so excited about the whole plan this year is because that's what we are going to start doing.
And I would just echo Dr. Martin that for me, it'd be good to see that there, because for me, I want to see kind of what we could do proactively early on for those kids and their families. And I know that their lessons and best practices are already out there, so that's good, but that's one strategy. And I would say the same thing is true for me, and I'm assuming this is happening, I can tell it is not, that especially for our early grade kids, are we also talking to their specials teachers about what they're noting, not just their academic teachers? Because oftentimes, we all know for gifted students, what might play out may be very different for them, based on the class, based on the teacher, especially early K one, two relationships matter for kids.
I think that's in place, I think the committees at the school-based level include all of those teachers, including the electors.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, just to reiterate what was made regarding K one, two, is the strategic plan, because it allows for such differentiation in student voice within those, those four Cs, you really get those kids that are gifted to produce higher quality work rather than, oh, you're done, here's another worksheet, here's another worksheet, here's another worksheet, which, you know, 10 years ago might have been not here.
Well, it was that way until, until the paper budget ran out, which was January.
That was, and I think it had to do with AIG, a couple of years ago, when we were talking about this, and I think at the time, we were having a lot of parents that were asking about their student being tested if they felt like they were, if they felt like their kid was AIG, AIG potential, but they had not tested or the school had recognized them as such. I was looking at the gateways and was sort of looking for that. Do we still sort of have that piece of policy in place?
There's always an opportunity for a parent to meet with the school staff if for some reason a student, it could be that the student was tested in third grade, but there's been changes and the parent feel like the student needs to be tested again. It could be that student's not with us in third grade and has not tested and, and the family wants to do that again. So there are, there are communication mechanisms to let parents know that, yes, we can do that at any time. And, and some parents do it on their own as well, and we work with them on those results also.
Thank you all for your questions, I'll be back here.
So next steps would be that we would bring the full AIG plan to the board as an action item. We can provide that to you, it's the whole plan, the whole plan attachment, whole plan's an attachment, right? So it's a draft until, so if you would, you know, take a look at it, see if you have any additional feedback that you'd like to provide, it'll be on an upcoming agenda, board agenda for approval.
It is, the plan that is now here, because none of this was there last night, so we didn't have a chance to look through it.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Neder, Miss Kinsey, I see you have lots of slides. Thank you.
Kathy, can you keep up? There's a power, I could ask you to do that.
It should actually be minimized down at the bottom. Thank you. What we want to do now is a little bit different than what we've done in the past several years, which is get board input on their, on your focus areas for the 2017, 18 operating budget earlier on before we finalize the development of a superintendent's proposed budget. So that's what we're here for today. Because we've got some new board members, we want to start with a little bit of background information. We also do want to share with you a meeting that we held with the division of principals with representatives from elementary, middle and high school that are on division. We met with them in late October, I believe it was October 25th, to get their feedback and input, and then we subsequently got that a few weeks ago, so want to share highlights of that with you as well. And then if time allows, we'd like to break out into small groups, perhaps two small groups for you to discuss and report out, but if time does not allow, we'd like to bring that to your next work session. So with that said, again, we want to just give you a brief overview of the budget primarily because we have some new board members. We did cover a little bit of this in your orientation, but time was limited there as well, and review the timeline and then the division of principals' feedback. And again, a reminder that this board and all other boards of education in the state of North Carolina are different than 90% of the rest of the country in that this board and other boards in North Carolina, I think three or four other states, do not have taxing authority and were fiscally dependent upon federal, state and local funding. Our funding by source, vast majority, almost 60% comes from the state currently. Just under 30% comes from the county, county appropriation, 8% for the current year from the federal government, and the remaining 4% we call other local, things like fines and forfeitures that come to us through the Wake County court system, red light camera fees, we still get some of those through the city of Raleigh primarily, but that's where the budget comes from. As far as, what does it use for? 91% goes directly to the schools for their operating costs. 4%, we have to account for it separately from the schools, but it's for transportation, child nutrition, utilities, maintenance, those sorts of things. So I would posit that really 95% of our operating budget goes straight to operating the schools. And then the remaining 5% is broken out between administrative services, technology, academic advancement, the board, the chief of staff and the superintendent. So if you look at it, between the state funding and the county appropriation, 88% of our operating budget comes through those two sources, 88%. So one could posit that the state and county decisions really do directly frame our operating budget, at least in terms of resources available.
David, we've been asked on a couple of occasions, particularly from a couple commissioners, how has this changed over time?
Oh, the percentage.
The 60, 30, for example, state and local.
I can say, I can give you a reference, I guess from my perspective, we can certainly pull additional data, but in the 10 or so years I've been here, it's been about the same ratio. We did see during the great recession, a reduction in state and an increase in percentage of federal, that was through the R funds, but, and Terry?
Yeah, it fluctuates like 59 to 62% state, it's not been that much of a change.
And that's my sense as well. It would be helpful to have that graph, because that's, there are several folks on the commission who have suggested that, that local is having to make up a big gap from the state. If that's not the case, we need to be clear about that so that people see where the disruption is.
Right, we will certainly, we'll pull the relative ratios, but I would add to what you're saying, the relative ratios don't necessarily speak to the totality of funding. But we'll pull that for you.
Yeah, well, whatever communicates is what we need to try, try to increase the communication on this issue. And I'd say if we could look at it over a decade, that gives us a little bit of time before the recession, through the recession, and where we are now.
If you look, there's not something up there that says lottery as a source.
Which, but that only goes, but that only goes to capital.
Just leave it, well, I'm saying, the, the education lottery is supposed to have augmented state funding. It has supplanted state funding. It has not changed the amount of funding coming from the state.
But is the lottery going to be in here? Because the lottery is mainly going to capital, we're talking to operating.
Well, the operating pieces really is in there within that.
There's nothing in our budget from the lottery for operations.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next couple points, student growth really continues to drive and help frame the budget significantly as well. This is a membership trend from 2010, 11 to 16, 17. We're initially building our budget for next year on the premise that we'll have another 2,000 students for 17, 18. And if you go back, for those of you who've been here a long time, I think that's most of you, another 10 years prior, same trend line, actually steeper in the early to mid 2000s. And with each student comes additional operating costs. Same thing as it relates to operating schools. We opened five schools this year, we've got four slated to open up next year. Every school comes with additional operating costs. Jumping to the timeline, staff again is developing an operating budget for the following year in the fall, so we've been working on this since August. We present to the board in the spring, usually at one of your March meetings. The board's required by statute to submit a proposed budget to the county commissioners by May 15. The board is required by law to adopt a budget by June 30th and begin operating about 45, 50 schools, usually right after the 4th of July. And all that frequently, and I'll go back to over the 10 years, I don't recall a year in which the state had finalized its state budget and therefore the funding for DTI and in turn this district by June 30th. So that lends to the challenges of our balancing what resources we may or may not have with the operating of our schools. And one way that we've managed through that is to operate on our internal budget.
Or tomorrow. I just like.
That is a good point.
Or tomorrow.
That is a good point, thank you. So again, effectively no control over federal and state funding. What I would say from my perspective, limited influence over local funding, and the local funding has been largely constrained by growth. To give you a snapshot, and this is from the county, Wake County government information, they show all of their different expenditures. They show Wake County public school system is 52% of their expenditures. Now, that includes both our operating budget and debt payments. I believe when you look at just the operating budget, it's in about the third, it's about a third, I can get you those exact numbers. But again, the infrastructure that must go to accommodate the significant growth in the county, which is funded by the county, competes for other resources, including our operating budget and funds that are available. If you look at where their revenue comes from, the county's revenue, two primary sources, property tax and sales tax. Between those two, it's about 85%, 69.7% property tax and 14 and a half percent sales tax. But again, at 70%, the primary driver there is property tax. County sets the property tax rate. It's estimated that with current valuations, every one cent increase per $100 valuation on the property tax generates about $14 million of revenue for the county. And to give you a sense of how Wake County compares with neighboring counties and/or what might be considered peer counties, and again, these are cents on the $100 valuation, you can see that owning a house in Wake County, a $250,000 house, your property taxes are a lot cheaper than in these other counties. So back to how our growth is dominating our budget, if you look at the budget that is in effect for the current year, 80% of the local increase requested was to meet growth, legislative impact, things that the legislature does that we're required in turn do, or program continuity, things that we are already doing that in order to continue to do, we need to ask for additional funding. Only 10% of our request was to do something new or to expand a program that was currently in place. So out of 100% of a request, 10% was for a newer expanding program.
And that got cut.
And that was further reduced. So the punchline there, funding new and expanding programs has been limited by funding on sustained revenue. This is a list of deferred needs that's in your budget book, our budget book, both the post-budget and the final budget, deferred needs, I'm not going to go through this, but it was about $90 million of deferred needs. These were items that were identified as needed but were deferred because other items took priority. And similarly, we went through an exercise like this and got your input a year ago as well, albeit later on in the budget process. And included in the presentation here are what came out of your sessions with that, and we have broken them into the area of academics, things like expanding foreign instruction, foreign language instruction, expanding alternate programs, additional programs for at-risk students. On the heels of your last presentation, expansion of AIG program, programs, and you heard the constraints there of the students we are to serve, and yet the funds we receive from the state, the Flux Academy, which was put into place, more choice models, enhancing the arts, differentiated resourcing, professional development, technology and supplies and administration. So as a backdrop, those were the focus areas we heard from you on a year ago. We were able to make some inroads there, albeit at least from my perspective, limited inroads based upon funding available. One other thing that is still looming as we look at this development process is the legislation that was put in place in the short session earlier this calendar year that basically restricts class sizes to the actual funding allotments. I'll get into detail there, but based upon this, we require about 460 additional teaching positions to be able to continue provide physical education, arts, music in the elementary schools that we're currently providing in order to meet the requirement of this, and we would have to find additional classroom space in our various schools that I'm not sure we have solutions for.
By August.
By July.
July.
For some of, for a third of our schools. For some of, for a third of our schools. As I shared with you, we've gotten input from the Division of Principals, want to share that with you next. They gave us their input, we asked it as a division, we got it by level, so I'm gonna, we're gonna show you elementary and then I believe middle and high in that order. And so there's some similarity, or congruence, if you will, between the levels, but you'll see some variance as well. Starting with the elementary priorities, and these are the number of, I guess, votes, each principal's given a number of votes. But you see in the top, we'll stay with the top ten. Additional resources directly related to teaching, IRTs, literacy and support, full-time coach, IRT support for all schools, say that overlaps, additional assistant principal allotment for large elementary schools, salary increase for school-based administrators, again, increased intervention in mental health workers or support at all schools. Terry, you brought that one up. Can you share briefly with some of the new report members, because I was unaware of that as well?
Yeah, I've asked the principals about that, because I wasn't aware we get funded any positions that were mental health workers. And they described that we had an arrangement with Wake County Health and Human Services, and they were actually providing that support, but no longer.
When did it change?
To reinstate that.
Do you remember when that changed?
I do not.
Probably a long time ago.
I think it came with some, one of the state's versions of mental health reform.
Curriculum, core reading and math materials, resources for a testing coordinator. And then, I'll let you peruse those briefly, but they were, the top ones were really right up here to look at the number of votes. But again, resources at the school to directly assist with teaching.
Number five is a key issue in the legislature now, principal salary compensation.
It is, they've acknowledged that. The list continues. Again, I'm not gonna go through this, because again, they got relatively speaking few votes, but there are a lot of valid needs up there.
Just on item three, seventy-six votes for instructional, instructional technology support. How many of our schools don't have that instructional technology person that was in our budget last year? We have like four hundred and fifty months of employment.
Kathy, do you know how many we've implemented at this point?
I want to say that we have them in about eighty schools.
So that's, that's the rest of them.
That's right.
They're half time.
There's the others.
But that's eighty of all hundred and seventy-six schools, not just elementary, correct?
Okay, but it's, it's an apparent need.
Can you clarify the difference between three and sixteen?
I think that probably is the same, one and the same.
Well, so...
Well, that's my question, is that certified, is that...
One of the classroom support, instructional, the ten, is for the school, right?
Right. So, right now, some schools choose to have a technology assistant position, which is not a certified teacher that supports the integration of technology and works with teachers, but one who tends to troubleshoot more, and make sure the labs are running and the equipment is functioning, kind of like Stacy said, the instructional support in terms of the widgets and widgets versus the support to teachers.
I would add, we are starting to see a little bit of shift in that thinking, because basically if it doesn't work, you can have all the good instructional aid, but technology has to work.
Right. Thank you.
So moving, still with elementary, we asked them, not just what are your priorities from a funding standpoint, but what might we be able to give up? Because if you consider, there are a lot of resources of funding, one is new additional funding, one is repurposing. So, their number one item, removing busing for grandfathered choice students. Item number two is don't do anything, budgets are constrained as they are. Three, distribute central services, coordinating teacher bunks of employment to the schools. Fourth, review all central services positions for reduction or elimination. Five, eliminate MTSS coaches, cut money spent on testing, eliminate expense of PD for administrators, eliminate Chief Three Thousand, reduce or eliminate PD for learner agency, and then the numbers really drop. They really drop after number seven.
What's a Chief Three Thousand?
It's a program that we're no longer funding.
Has it, we are no longer funding, okay, very proactive of you.
Sixteen schools.
It was a pilot in sixteen schools, and some schools actually chose it on their own.
Okay.
It's a program that allows you to differentiate the resource that you give students to read in the classroom, because sometimes the way the teachers differentiate is to provide different reading material to different children, so they're not all reading the same thing. And Chief Three Thousand is a product that takes the same current events article, and then levels it based on what students are able to do, and so that all students are reading the same thing, but they're reading it differently based on what skills that they have.
But they don't work, and we're not using, we're not paying for it. It's expensive.
So as we read these numbers, each principal gets one vote, so we have what, a hundred and six, hundred and nine elementary schools?
They were, no, they were given, I think, five each. They, they were given the equivalent of five votes.
Okay.
Like five dots.
But, and all elementary school principals were, were present here?
All, and even though this was the division, the division did push the survey out to all principals in the district.
So, our response rate was, do you have an idea?
We can pull that for you.
I'm just trying to understand, sort of, where we might call a threshold cutoff as significant. You know, is it just the top three, going down to the forty-nine, fifties, those seem to be in a group?
I would call the methodology in which they implement this perhaps...
Rough, but...
A little unstructured, or, or rough. If you would like, we can get you the raw data, if that would be helpful to you. And I can get you the details around each of the methodologies, because they were different between elementary, middle, and high as well.
I don't think we need the raw data, but the methodology, particularly the scopes, we know.
Yes.
The responses.
We'll get you that. And then again, these had very few responses, again, on the cost savings side.
I do appreciate the decreased TA positions, teacher assistant positions got no score.
Yeah, I'm, I'm disappointed.
I was surprised that the TA ranked number seventeen in the choir list, Bill. I guess I was moving it to ten, but they didn't really ask, they're not asking for more TAs?
That was what that one item was, was to basically be able to provide the TA, allowing them to be in place on days when students are not there, such as right before the beginning of the year.
Because right now, they're what, nine point three months?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
But nowhere on the list was, was a request for the more TAs, because they had TA numbers cut.
For additional positions, you're saying?
Yeah.
To increase the formula, effectively.
Formula, yeah.
Okay. I'm curious what that means.
And then last, they gave us what they considered to be the absolute, it's there right now, don't make it, don't have it go backwards. TAs, school personnel, support for high-need schools, again, I think you see a repeat there, custodial services, and then one vote each down there. Moving to middle, and their top priorities, restoring the assistant principal formula to pre-grade recession. For those of you who were here during the Great Recession, we made an adjustment, one of many, that impacted staff, both central services staff as well as school staff, that impacted elementary, middle, and high school AP formulas. It did have a bigger impact on the middle schools than it did on the elementary and high schools. That's what that speaks to. ADM allotment adjusted to reduce class size, solidify core instructional resources, full-time IRT, or instructional technology facilitator, excuse me, allotment for testing coordinator, recurring money for technology, funding for activity buses. Do, just to let you know, we had reserved, in a special projects reserve, funding for twenty-five activity buses. We did request, I believe at your last meeting, for you to request the county to move that money from operating to capital. It's on the county's agenda for January third, for them to do that. Once that's done, we'll be able to order those buses. You'll see, though, there is some overlap between their priorities and the elementary school priorities. Looking in the other direction, feedback in the middle schools, as far as cost savings, at the top, reduction in centrally-based instructional coaches, reduction in centrally-based coordinating teachers. You'll see a duplicate there as far as grandfathering transportation. Do not expand any programs. Discontinue creation of new central office positions. Reduce central office printing, reduce PD, charge fees for athletics, reduce instructional supplies. And again, these last few just add a few votes, and reduce custodial services.
I'm curious, you said reduced professional development, this says reduced district professional development. Those, I would hear is potentially two very different things. One being potentially more discipline, your school, your, what your teaching base professional development versus the broad, district-wide. Is this supposed to capture both, or is this...
Dr. Martin, I don't know that we have the information for this. At this point, it was a one, it was, we received the information, and really the next steps would be to tease those sorts of questions and answers out. Again, from the middle schools, don't touch salaries, the AP formula, don't go backwards on class size, the salary supplement, instructional supplies, don't go backwards on any of the allotment formulas, and then facilities, device replacements, and activity buses. And then moving up to the high schools, their priority areas. And they had a different methodology, so a lower number means a higher priority. So if you just bear with us, kind of like golf, we're golfing, we're looking for a low number. So these lower numbers are, are higher priorities, so they're in priority order from high to low, but just reverse. Restore the allotment formula for high school. You'll recall, one of the adjustments we did for the current year was to make a small change to the classroom one. It was about one student, I believe, one student. Employee raises, textbook and digital content funding, AP allotment formulas, testing coordinators, multi-discipline instructional coach, technology facilitator. So you see, I think that was on all three levels, elementary, middle, and high as a priority. Social workers at high-need schools, increased funding to eliminate... They're not really double back, but what they are is they're morning routes, where they're a dual route, where we have enough time for the bus to deliver students, and then go immediately surrounding the neighborhood and collect more students, still get them to school well before the bell, but do that with one bus instead of two.
And what does that mean in the afternoon?
Same thing.
Same thing, so there's kids waiting at the school.
They may be waiting an additional ten or twelve minutes, yes. Restore the building cleaning schedule, one-to-one technology, literacy coaches, mowing and lawn care schedule. And Joe, on that one, I'm not aware that we've reduced that formula. Have we?
It's been a while recently, it's been a few years.
Okay. Restore funding for students to take the P S A. And again, these are flipping the gear on cost savings from the high school, and again, a lower number is a higher priority. So, decrease testing and assessments, adjust central office temperatures by one degree or more. We did do that for the current year, so I guess they're looking to turn the heat up on us in the summer. Turn the cool down on us right now. No transportation for grandfathered students. Reduce or cut central office teacher positions. Increase coaches in the district, increase community use rental rates. Literacy coaches.
Academic coaches.
Eliminate smaller high schools if admission continues to be so rigorous. Increase parking fees or reduce instructional supplies.
I'm sorry, what does that mean, if admission continues to be so rigorous? For the, eliminate smaller high schools?
Kathy, and, and again, we did not, we had about an hour to go through all of this with the division, so we didn't get into discussion. I'm not sure if that has meaning to you, without further conversation.
I, it may have meaning to me, but I would not want to say what I think it means without checking.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can explore, I would be interested in exploring what that means, understand what that means. And they are out to get central office.
And then last, for high schools, critical arts assistant principal months, teacher formulas, intervention coordinators, extra duty pay and...
So the, the extra duty pay being critical, I'd like to see that, so the decrease in coaches, that's academic coaches, not more athletic coaches?
That is our understanding of their, and they did clarify, they did clarify that in our...
Thank you. Extra duty would be...
So, that was the background. We will proceed as the board would desire, but I, I would say that in eleven minutes, we're not able to have an adequate discussion.
Really, we're just going to pull it in eleven minutes, but, so, this was very helpful and great feedback, so I appreciate you all using this strategy. I also like the switch of the time frame, so letting us start early as well. But that's, unfortunately, I wish we did have time, but I do, I don't think we can be really productive in eleven minutes in the way that the board would want to be engaged in providing that.
I'd like a comment, I think it's interesting, principals are their budget managers for their schools. They know what resources they have, they know what choices they have, and they know how to deploy what they get. Apparently, they know a little about central office. We persistently are shown to be one of the leanest central service organizations in the world in terms of supporting the number of employees and students that we have. So I'm, I'm very happy to receive this information from the principals, in particular regarding to how do we prove what's happening to the kids and the outcomes there. I'm less excited about some of the reaches that have been made for things that they may be less familiarity with. So I mean, I, I appreciate the input.
That's a good way to put it, as much as I think...
I'd just like to observe that, not unrelated to what you're seeing, this, this reminds me of a starvation budget. When, when you have a starved population, I'm worried about you getting any rice to eat, because then I don't get rice to eat, we forget to plant rice. And, and what I'm, what I'm struck in all of these comments is, I don't see any planting rice vision, goals, this is all, how do I hang on? And I get that, because I live at, at the university level as well, that we're very much in a, in a hang on. How do we, how do we continue providing the education that we know needs to be done? But, but I just want to observe that, that I see no planting rice. I see, I see all, I've got to make sure I have enough rice to eat. And I think that's where the central office comes from, and I'd love to see us...
The comments about central office.
No, no, yeah, yeah. I'd, I'd love to see us, both as a board and as a system, and frankly, we've got to get our commissioners on board with this, and we've got to get the state on board with this, to start asking, what is it we need to do? You know, what is the Wake County public school system that we want? For all of our kids, for all of our community? And then ask the question, how do we get there? Instead of where we are right now is, what, what can we do without? What can we avoid? It's the wrong conversation for education. So I'm ready to, I'm ready to plant some rice.
Mr. Seid.
So let me take a stab at trying to plant some rice, start planting some rice. Question is, can we, I know, I guess we can, start a process of conversation similar to what we do with our capital... to what we do with our capital plan and facilities, and start meeting with county staff and/or commissioners to begin planting that seed or the rice around our operating budget and timing to growth, so that, one, we're not hitting the county commissioners and what have you with a big request, unknowingly or not, when that time comes, but, but more importantly, working at a long-term strategy that is not sort of this annual ask. But like we did with, again, the facilities, and it may not be a seven-year plan, it may not even be a five-year plan, it may be a two-year or three-year, and I would love just to have a ideal budget like we do at the state level, where, again, we're starting to tie the growth piece that we see every year into some sort of formula that at least some part of our budget is somewhat predictable based on the growth. So even if it's just meeting with county, just on the portion of the budget that is, of course, the local appropriation, and I'm, I'm looking at you, Ms. Niedler, that might be a question for you, or superintendent, or our leadership, and having that
So yes.
Conversation with, with them, so I don't know where that's going.
So I'll start, and Dr. Merrill and Christine and David can interject there. So this came up at one of our joint meetings last year with county commissioners, and so that's essentially why I asked, and we talked about instituting the finance committee, one, so we could do this, get our feedback early on, but also not blindside the county commissioner, and I think we all learned a valuable lesson working with county commissioners, regardless of where we ended up with the capital budget. And so, again, to your point, there's no aspiration for a seven-year plan, but there's definitely an aspiration for coming up with a long-term plan and process, so the county commissioners, specifically them, know kind of what our process is. I'm not sure if you agree, or I add more to the focus of that.
I mean, and, I have a couple of years ago, if we could do the same thing around our facilities piece and, and growth, and meeting with municipalities and other municipality leaders to address some of those things, nothing really happened around that, it seems, again, with the operational piece, that would be helpful, instead of just, again, coming up sort of yearly.
Agreed, which is why we have a new process in place starting today.
Well, I think both boards will benefit from our predictability, to your point, and to working together, and I think it needs to be from both boards, that coming from, that support coming from both boards.
I just think that would be more helpful.
I think we're at that place now.
Sitting over here, in our proverbial hobby tower, and crafting a budget in isolation, and then going over here saying, well, here's, here's
Agreed, and again, regardless of how we break out the, the percentage of the Wake County budget, I mean, we, we, I think, all heard loud and clear from the commissioners, two things, one, process, but two, not to be blindsided by the number, and so building that and having those conversations early, and in the next couple of months is the goal.
And does that need to be, and I'm sure there's some element that is staff to staff, and then board to board, or elected to elected, and then jointly in some way?
Right, so we have our leadership meeting in January, but that's essentially the process. We'll do our process, which we're not doing right now, but we'll do our internal process, and staff will work together as well, and the finance committee will further flesh out those things, but that is absolutely the conversation we already have with the leadership with the county commissioners.
So if I'm hearing you, then you're saying that conversation will start with you and Ms. Kushner, and
Well, the conversation, the process actually started today, but yes, we've already had the conversation with leadership, and so we have a scheduled meeting in January with the leadership and county commissioners.
The same, who I need to hold accountable.
Of course, it'll, it'll be the first time.
Mr. Sine.
Win and down.
Broad shoulders, broad shoulders.
I would, I would simply add that I, I love the way staff's creation of the core team around facility pushed up and forced both board, invited both boards to, to
Facility.
Engaged both boards.
And I'm optimistic that we can do the same on operating, although it seems to be, it seems to get a whole lot less traction, and maybe because there's less sense of obligation for operating than there is for facility, because that's clearly not a state initiative, state, state responsibility. But, but, but we do need assistance at the, at the elected's level for this discussion, so I think the committee can help, and the finance committee can help us on that.
And that's why I asked, because I mean, now, now we've got a process in place based on the seven-year plan that we did there, that, that can happen. I know, again, operating is less tractionable, a little sexy, but nevertheless.
I, I think the county commissioners have some leadership that's interested in doing this, so we'll see if they can hold their colleagues up count.
Okay, thank you. We will come back to your January work session for the actual discussion about focus areas. Thank you very much.